We welcome you to the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting being held Thursday, May 1st at 6:00 PM. With that, Marty Seller, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Woolley will not be attending tonight. Commissioner Lehman?
Present.
Commissioner Prou?
Present.
Vice Chair DeRosa?
Present.
Chairman Frost?
Present.
And our liaison, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Adam is here.
And we have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We also welcome our town attorney being here with us this evening. Thank you very much. Okay. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance. If you'd all please stand. Commissioner Lehman is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start out with a call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. With that, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the commission this evening? Okay, and I don't see anyone online.
No.
Okay, and with that, we'll close the call to the public and go to Agenda Item Number Five. This is approval slash approval with conditions or disapproval of the minutes of the regular meeting being held that was held on April 17th. Commission members, any edits, comments, concerns with those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I have no edits, so I'd move approval.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval of the minutes from April 17th by Vice Chair DeRosa and a second by Commissioner Prou. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That was four ayes on that one. New Business, 6A. This is be a presentation and will include a public hearing, approval or disapproval or approval with conditions of a conditional use permit for a new school building at Desert Rock Church located at 9320 West Franklin Road. This is PZ-25-29. Staff, presentation, please.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission, tonight we have a conditional use permit for the Desert Rock Church. Here's a map of the location. It is just off on the west side of Hunt Highway and Franklin Road. It is located at 923 West Franklin Road, and the site currently consists of a worship center and several small buildings for offices and daycare slash preschool classrooms. The property is not under the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Planned Unit Development. This is hard-zoned, R1R, or a single residential ranchette. The CUP proposes a new classroom building for a small private Christian school. The school will operate Monday through Friday and will approximately at this time have maybe 75 kids or less. That number may, depending on enrollment of this year, it may go, it may be 75 or less. The residential district use regulations table in the town code is what brought about this conditional use permit for a public or private school. For an R1RAC or conditional use permit is required. So per our code, when the Planning and Zoning Commission considers a conditional use permit as well as staff, we need to look at or be shown the following, that the site of the proposed use and the surrounding uses, we also need to be shown the access to the site and the impact on the surrounding properties. And this case is just to approve the use of the private school on the site. This is not about the building's design. That will come later if this is approved when it comes to the design review. We're just looking at the use. So the site will have one point of vehicular access from Franklin Road, and this road is paved, and this will serve both visitors and employees. The surrounding land uses are, to the north, you have the single residential ranchette. You also have the same zoning to the east. Both of these parcels are vacant. And then to the south, you have the Anthem Merrill Ranch Planned Unit Development, which is currently vacant. And then to the west, you have the Walker Butte Planned Unit Development, which is also vacant. And then onsite, you have the Desert Rock Church. For public outreach, staff and the applicant completed a neighborhood meeting on April 10th at 6:00 PM in the community center. A letter of notice was sent out to those 300 feet per the site, and that was 15 days ahead of that meeting. A few members of the public did attend the meeting, and there were questions asked about how the school would operate, how many children would attend in its plans, what are its future plans for expansion, and then access for the site. Along with that advertised neighborhood meeting, there was also the advertised public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town council, and those dates are shown With that, while reviewing this application, staff found that the conditional use permit, with all that was provided, that we make a recommendation that this CUP move forward and that should be approved. We did not see it as a major impact on the surrounding vacant parcels and the traffic be minimal enough. We understand that there is a traffic problem on Franklin and Hunt Highway. We know that we are trying to work to fix it, but we don't see this as being the cause of it or immensely exacerbating that issue. And with that, the applicants have representatives here to answer any questions that the commission
The applicants are not presenting to us tonight, correct? They're just here to answer questions?
Correct.
Okay, very good. All righty, commission members, any questions of staff or the applicant this evening?
No. The only question I have, and this is probably a staff question, is the actual worship center, since it's R1R, has it got a special use permit that actually covers it being a worship center?
Yes, so back in, I think it was either 2019 or 2020, they came to us the first time to have the conditional use permit for the church, the worship center, as well as a secondary use for that, the daycare and preschool. And that was approved back then, and building went forward for the Desert Rock Church.
Is this something that we ought to rezone as a town, rather than having to operate under a special use permit?
We, it can be rezoned, there can be an application for that. That would be something that the owner would want to do, and then we would need to look for a proper zoning that would encompass everything that they would want, as well as maybe rezone a couple of the parcels that they own around them as well.
Okay. Really, that was the only thing I was interested in, because I don't have a problem. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, no, this is simply a conditional use permit for land use. The applicant, just want to confirm that the applicant will live up to the conditions that the staff has provided. Have you read the conditions of approval? I see a head nodding yes, and you will abide and live by those conditions?
Yes.
Yes, other than that?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
No, I have no concerns or questions.
I had a couple of questions. One of them was answered in the presentation today from staff, and that is that there'll be approximately 75 students for this portion of the school. Does that number of 75, does that include the existing preschool? Hey, Jay?
Mr. Chairman, could I jump in for a second?
Sure.
This is a public hearing tonight.
Yes.
So, could we go about opening and closing the public hearing and then allowing for a communication between the commission and the petitioner?
Yeah, we can do that. I was going to do it after this, but that's fine, too.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing.
I couldn't hear you.
No, we're, just, I've been being educated in protocol here, which is always necessary with me. We are going to open a public hearing, since this is, as Agenda Eyes is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. So if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak as part of the public hearing, and we have one attendee online, Bonnie Bariola, Bonnie, is there anything that you would like to say as part of the public hearing? Okay, she's raised her hand.
I couldn't hear you.
It's all right, sir. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Okay, Bonnie.
No, I have no questions at all. I'm just watching what's happening.
Okay. Thank you for tuning in, we appreciate it. And is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak as part of the public Doesn't look like there's anyone that'd like to speak as part of the hearing, and so we'll close the public hearing and bring this back up to the commission. And now, I'll ask my question. Okay, so you, in the application here, it says there will be 75 students approximately. Does that include the existing preschool students as well?
No, it does not.
It does not? And speak into the microphone so that our digital audience can hear us.
No, it does not.
It does not? So what would be the total there of all students at the facility?
I didn't bring those figures with me, but I think it's about 50 in the preschool.
So about 125-ish? And will you be covering all grades, preschool through 12th grade, graduation?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, okay. And Marty Seller referred to a concern that has been expressed about situations like this, which are, it's a charter school type situation where buses are not used, where it's parental drop-off. Right now, I agree with the staff's assessment that this is not a problem here, because you're basically the last user on Franklin Road to the west. But I'm concerned in the future with this, as it develops as a collector street, that if we have, you know, as many as 125 people, or 125 cars, probably be less than that, say 100, showing up at any one time and staggered out onto that road to pick up students, that we could create quite a traffic hazard for the future. So I'm wondering how, what your plan is to address that. Are you staggering times for pickup, or, just would like to hear from you on that?
Right now, we have adequate place for double cars pulling up to drop off, that there's no problem.
Yeah, and I, with what you said, that there's probably about 50 students there, I'd probably completely agree with you. I'm just concerned that when it goes to 125, if we'll not have stacking that goes out onto Franklin Road, and if you have a contingency in place to deal with that so that we don't cause a future traffic hazard problem.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding, because I spoke to the principal, that their times of school are staggered to the ALA schools, so that they're not all coming out and converging at one time.
Yeah, and it's not ALA school, it's just literally Franklin when it turns into a collector.
Correct, but this school will get out at different times. So preschool gets out sometimes as late as 6 o'clock at night, depending upon parents. Kindergarten, as you can see here, is half-day, so I think there are different times.
Yeah, and I could see where kindergarten, preschool would probably be a little bit different times, but then you've got first through fifth grade, that all the parents are going to show up at the same time. So I just don't want the town to have to fight the fight with you, or you to be concerned later about parents complaining that, hey, we're stacked clear out onto Franklin Road, and I'm not feeling safe out here because I'm stacked up in traffic. So I'm just asking that you put together some sort of a contingent plan, that should that happen, that you can take corrective action to rectify the situation. And the site, as shown here, I'm concerned you don't have quite enough land space to make that happen.
Mr. Chairman, let me, maybe I could help a little bit. I was out there today, late this afternoon, drove in and looked at the parking lot and things of that sort, and kind of commented on that, but I noticed that you do have parking on gravel over to the east in front of the church. Is that correct?
There is a gravel parking lot to the east on a different piece of property.
Okay, is that your property?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, you do have more than just what's paved, for if there were, say, 100 cars there to pick up kids in the afternoon, they could get off of Franklin, right?
There's over 80 spots in the parking lot that we have now. We did a traffic flow when we submitted this, and the traffic flow is in the plan, that we won't have a problem with it.
Okay, we'll hold you to that. I've just, I've just seen things like this happen, and you're living with it now as you try to get out of your site onto Hunt Highway at certain times of the day, because that's a mess, and you see it, you know what's going on. I just don't want that to happen to you.
I understand, appreciate it.
So I hope you're looking forward to that and planning for that so that it doesn't, because it's just, it's not, it's not a win-win for anybody when that happens. Okay. I think that answered all of my questions, so I think we're ready for a, if everybody's ready, we're ready for a motion.
You closed the public hearing?
Yes, we did close the public hearing.
Then I have, my motion stands that we approve this CUP for Desert Rock Academy.
And I'll second to approve.
And I assume that motion includes the conditions from staff as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I'll say, we have a motion for approval by Vice Chair DeRosa and a second by Commissioner Lehman that includes approval with conditions, is that from the staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Like you have four ayes up here, Marty Seller. Thank you very much, thanks for being here. And that will go by our calendar, that will go to council on the 20th of this month.
Correct.
Okay, new business, Item 6B. This is a presentation slash public hearing slash approval and disapproval, approval with conditions of an amendment to the Town of Florence Development Code, Chapter 150, regarding the radius of notification for applicable projects. Andrew, are you doing the presentation this evening?
I sure am, thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you.
One second, let me share the screen on Zoom. Okay. All right, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. So, last meeting, I brought forth to you the research and our initial recommendation, and we had a good discussion about this amendment. I'll go through the presentation a little bit again, since the chairman was not here last time, and for the sake of the public, since this is a public hearing. So last time, again, was just a work session. Now you are making your recommendation, we will have the vote and the public hearing. It will not be codified until it gets approval from the town council. So, let's go through here. So, not a ton has changed in this presentation from before, but again, we'll still go through it. So, members of the P&amp;Z requested that the radius be increased, and then staff researched several cities and towns. The list of them follows, and we'll go through all seven of those before we get to what the recommendation is from staff. So I have highlighted the, really the key words with the radii that each city uses. So, City of Phoenix notifies within 600 feet of the site, and they also add the bit about the nearest resident within the four quadrants, so the adjacent properties are specifically noted there as well. And then they also notify neighborhood associations registered with the city within a one-mile radius of the site, which I mentioned last time is a bit of a pariah to go out as far as one mile, you'll see. Next up, we have City of Chandler, we mail to all landowners within 600 feet, and then registered neighborhood organizations located within a quarter-mile, which is a little more standard you'll see throughout. Avondale has the flat 1,000-foot radius for property owners and HOAs. City of Mesa has just the 500-foot radius of the exterior boundary of the property. City of Tempe does, I believe, the same as City of Chandler, 600 feet to property owners, and then the quarter-mile for HOAs. Town of Gilbert, we have 300 feet for property owners, and then they have the bit here about there could be a larger radius if there are provisions, and then the 1,000-foot for HOAs. And lastly, we have City of Buckeye, which does a little bit of a different take on it here, and they have 300 feet from the outer boundary for properties under 20 acres, and then when you are on a property greater than 20 acres, that radius increases to 500 feet. So, I put Buckeye last because it takes a good bit from their recommendation. Similarly, we are proposing that kind of trigger point of increasing the radius for larger projects. So, for projects under 20 acres, we propose that we retain the 300-foot radius. For projects 20 acres or more, on a parcel that's 20 acres or more, the radius increases to 600. Then, we are also incorporating the bit with HOAs. So, neighborhood organizations within a quarter-mile of the subject property shall be notified regardless of acreage. So, small or large, we're still notifying the HOAs. And just to give you some visuals of what exactly that looks like, we have the small radius, as I called it, this is a 300-foot buffer from a small parcel, this is about a half-acre. I mentioned last time, this is our office, and just going out 300 feet. And you'll see here, too, that the radius is not necessarily, it doesn't create a perfect circle, because you're drawing it around a rectangle. It's taking every point around a rectangle and measuring, and you'll see that that gets really distorted kind of as you go larger, like here. So this parcel is not 20 acres, this is actually a 40-acre parcel, this is where the Westland Village PUD proposal was. And so, you know, in the grand scheme of projects, we would consider that a, kind of a smaller project, but you see, it's still, it's 40 acres, it's still double what that trigger point would be. So that is a 600-foot radius, and you can see it really hits a lot of those proposed homes down there in the Bisbee Ranch subdivision to the south, and then quite a bit to the east as well. Here is what the HOA buffer would look like, so this is a quarter-mile from the small parcel, because again, regardless of acreage, we are notifying HOAs within this radius. So not all of these property owners would get an envelope, but if there is an HOA here, then the HOA would receive notice. And then, here we are again with the 40-acre parcel and what a quarter-mile would look there. You can see it goes pretty much into Western Crossing there, it kind of just touches it, so that HOA, along with Bisbee Ranch, of course, and any others that may be in there, would receive notice. So we have several sections of the Town of Florence's code that need to be amended to accommodate this, conditional use, temporary use, the citizen review process, and applications and fees. In the previous presentation, this Part D of conditional use permit, the wording was a little bit confusing, and I changed it up a bit, just kind of included some extra sentences to make it a little more clear, instead of jamming everything in in one sentence. So, we're not striking anything, as you can see from this part, we are just adding those extra bits, including that immediately adjacent portion, which you saw the City of Phoenix had that in their research as well, or in their zoning ordinance, to have that immediately adjacent language, making sure that those neighbors are for sure notified. So Parts D and E there needed some additional language. Temporary use permit, again, pretty similar. Citizen review process, as you can see, it was simply added here, there's, again, we're not striking anything. It was actually not listed here. The 150.22 and 150.15 kind of refer back to each other a lot, but neither of those sections actually called out the 300 feet, so I wanted to have at least one of them call out the radius. So that was added more for clarity's sake than anything. And then applications and fees, this is just going over a list of what people need in their submittals, and so of course, it includes the list of the property owners, and so we need to update what they need, what property owners they need to be notifying. So with that, just a bit of clarification based on our work session last time, the neighborhood organizations are being notified by the applicant, and that is, the ultimate responsibility falls on the applicant. The neighborhood organizations then notify their residents as they see fit. We can't force them to send individual letters. They can post it on a community bulletin board, send it an email, they do what they see as best fit. So, they're strongly encouraged to notify, but they're not necessarily required, but the applicant is required to notify the HOA. And then lastly, just to get ahead of a potential question that I thought might come up, why is something like a variance not included? So first off, variances are only heard by the Board of Adjustment. The Planning and Zoning Commission made this request, and you guys do not see variances come before you. And then, when you look at the language of the variance ordinance, it, the intention seems to want the immediate neighbors to be notified more than anyone, and so maintaining the 300-foot, we felt was still okay and applicable for variance, whereas it's not necessarily, you don't necessarily need to increase the radiance, the radius for a variance. And that is that, so we can entertain questions, and we'll do public hearing, and then have the vote.
Okay, I'll see if I do better this time. We'll open the public hearing now. I can learn. Anyone that would like to speak to us here in the audience this evening? And Marty, your hand's not raised, so I'm assuming that you are just still listening. If you would like to make a comment, why please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, and no one is stepping forward here this evening, we will close the public hearing and ask commission members. Vice Chair?
So, Andrew, if there was no HOA, the developer would be required to notify all the residents in that area. However, since there is an HOA, you're going to take that away from the developer and make it, have the HOA be the one responsible to notify the residents in that area?
The residents, so if we go back to the visual, you can see the, go back. So this was the 600-foot buffer here. You can see a lot of the residents in, like Bisbee Ranch to the south, will be getting an individual letter. Not necessarily every single resident in Bisbee Ranch would get a letter.
But people within that zone will get the letter?
Yeah.
That's all, I wanted to make sure that it was not the HOA's responsibility to notify.
Correct. They will be notified, they do not have to notify anyone else. It's up to them.
Thank you.
Yes.
You referred on your clarity about neighborhood associations, are the only entities actually registered HOAs, or are there any other entities that would actually get that notice?
So the Town of Florence does have a contact list for the neighborhood associations. We don't have any other groups that would control a neighborhood to that same level, so we don't have a So, we don't have a mention of any other kind of entity.
So, it's just some, some people in the neighborhood that have kind of communicate with each other? Is that kind of what we're saying?
Yeah, so if they don't have a, they don't have a neighborhood association, but maybe they have a little internal, they'll just talk to each other.
Right. So, they're not registered with the town, like an HOA?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Okay. Commission members, are we ready for a motion?
Also move that we approve, can you go to your slide with the, with what you're proposing?
Sure thing.
Okay. There we go. I think that's the recommendations. I'd like to move that we accept the staff's recommendation and like to forward those to the town council for code change.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of this agenda item, which is 6B, which is to approve the staff's recommendation by Commissioner Lehman and a second by Commissioner Prue. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I think you had four ayes on that one. Marty Sella.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Andrew. Thanks for all your research on making this happen, giving us the background there. Okay, now, 6C is a work session on the Town's 2022 General Plan, which is Agenda I is to take us through the introductory sections, so.
So, just kind of a blast from the past, staffed, dredge up the old general plan updates PowerPoints that we had done for the workshops, as well as what we presented to planning and zoning commissions, town councils, and the publics at the time. This one happened to be from the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council work session. It does go through some of the parts that we are looking at right now. So, in the introduction, a lot of what the information you have in there is the community assessment. You have demographics, housing, transportation.
Marty Sella, could I interrupt just for a, because I know this has caused some questions in the past, that, if you flip back to your opening slide?
Yes.
One more.
So, this is, this is the agenda that came in from that work session.
No, I mean, go, go back again to another slide. See, this says, "General Plan Update 2030," but the general plan says 2022. So, if you could explain that, just so there's no confusion to people who might be watching this?
Right. So, originally, when the Florence General Plan was being made, it was started in 2019, 2020. And the general plan is meant to last for 10 years, so they had it at 2030. However, at the time, the pandemic happened, and we thought it'd be less confusing for the public to see 2022, when the general plan was actually ratified and approved, than having 2030 show up like it does in this presentation. So, that's why that today you see 2022, instead of what you see here in the presentation.
But, Mari, the information we have is not what you're showing us on the slides.
The demographic, or?
I think what you're showing is a, is the, the presentation that was made, which kind of took a lot of stuff and condensed it all into one slide.
Well, yes, but we're looking at slides, and I'm trying to look at my book to see how it, how it coincides. If you go to the next slide, thank you. Not, yeah, okay. I didn't see that in, I didn't see that in my binder.
Because that part is more in our town and our people section, where you start to see a bunch of graphs, projections, demographics.
So, that, what I'm hearing you say is that that, this particular slide on community assessment is in this binder somewhere?
Yes. This just condenses a lot of that information into this slide.
No, no. Is this slide in my binder?
Yes. Well, this slide specifically?
Correct.
No, but the information is in your binder.
Okay. I personally would appreciate a copy of this slide.
Okay. I can send this slide to the commission as well, for those who want to see what was done then, but anyway.
So, if, can I jump in? So, let, if we can go back to the beginning. So, we were asked to give a presentation on the 2022 General Plan. The idea of presenting what was presented in the joint workshop was to set a level playing field for this group, who may not have participated in that presentation. So, as opposed to rebuilding a PowerPoint deck for this presentation, the idea was to use the deck that was prepared and presented in a joint session to the town council and Planning and Zoning Commission at that time, that really does take a full, a full document and turn it into 19 slides. So, we wanted to start with that, and then get into the more details. So, apologies if that started off on the wrong foot, but the idea here is to set the stage for what, because again, we're giving a history report on something that was approved three years ago. So, we wanted to get back and basically start from that point, and then get into the document that was approved by the town via referendum by over 74%. So, we wanted to get everybody on that equal footing, and then get into the conversation. So, that is why this first part of the presentation's being given, so that we can get on to that start.
Or, if we want, we can just start going through the general plan, like, we can skip this entirely.
Yeah.
Just start going.
What, what you presented is, is a compilation of all, of this, of the beginning of this document, which is, which is great. I don't have to go in and, and kind of add things up and find them in different sections. You've given me on that slide a history of what's in this document, which is just a summary, a summary of what's in the document. I, I'd like to see that summary rather than have to, I mean, eventually, I go through every page, but that summary is just nice to have. And maybe when I pick up my agenda in two weeks, you can just give me a, a copy of the, the entire deck, and I can go through that also.
Okay. So, this just shows a general timeline of how this process worked. We started in December of 2019 to engage in-person with surveys with the public. Of course, that was a bit interrupted by the pandemic in the 2020, but we were able to get most of those in-person outreach groups done before the lockdown. In March of 2021, we continued to do engagement with staff and outreach groups and focus groups. And then, we did complete the 60-day reviews and community outreach to shareholders and members of the community, to see if they had any comments about what's in the general plan, what they want to see fixed, those kinds of things. We did actually found, find some of the surveys that were done back in the day, and we were able to save them in our files, so if we wanted to look back, then we had that chance. And then, of course, in November of 2022, there was the ratification process that took place by the town and by the voters. Some of those community surveys, we do have what the graph showed, what was given, and what people had said through online forums, as well as paper surveys that were done at these outreach groups. Here's some pictures and some photo, photos showing those community outreaches in person, and then also, a whole website was made that was dedicated to outreach and notification of the general plan, where you could find information, where was the next community workshop, what kind of things were being changed, and where to get involved and learn more information. That has come down since, because it is no longer applicable since the 2022 general plan is complete. So, what's in the plan, then, state-required elements to be within the general plan, the land use, circulation, open space, growth area, environmental planning, cost of development, and water resources. All of that is part of our current general plan. And then, some elements that we added as the town, our community character, housing, parks, trails, and open space, historic preservation, since that's a very big part of our development, economic development, energy, and then infrastructure planning. And town residents were actually asked to review the current general plan, that vision statement at the time, and that, and this shows the results of that survey, and led to an updated vision statement, which was within this introductionary part of the general And if I can just move that, there we go. It shows what was crossed out, what was added to that vision statement. All right. So, something that's also part of this next part is the goals, objectives, and strategies. It shows the current structure, or what was in the old plan, and then what was being revised. And then, some draft community goals were pulled from those outreach groups and surveys, as well as what the town would see as some calls that we would like to do in the community. Also included in the introductory part are the goals, written out in paragraph form, and what exactly we mean when we say certain sentences. And that continues on these next slides. Something that was also added was a chart that showed where these goals may be included in policies of land use. So, in terms of land use, and also mobility, and how they're related to some of these And in the old land use development plan, the general plan had it set up like a zoning map. So, everything almost specifically had its own future land use. It didn't function as a zoning map, but it, it was sure being used and looked like one. And it had over 20 types of land uses within it, and one of the goals of the update to the general plan was to condense this. And that is how the place types came into play. There's only so many types of places or feel and lifestyle and intensity within these place-type descriptions, and that's where we're having this rural living, the suburban neighborhood that you've been seeing, that neighborhood center, town center, highway mixed use. All of it was meant to encompass these kinds of things and provide for some flexibility, but also, a lot of uses have different kinds of feels, lifestyles, intensities, maybe mixed in. So, we wanted to account for some of that in these different place-type descriptions, and not just seal it into one single zoning type. And so, here are some also, the other place types, the innovative district, the industrial district, prison, which we, I believe we changed it to correctional facilities, and then military reservation. Sports-oriented mixed use was a major general plan amendment that had just been completed before our update, so that was an added place type, and then, of course, open space. So, the land use development included the scenario approach of how we wanted to go about this. So, it was a process of evaluate the current general plan and zoning, review the current development and approve entitlements, identify greenfield spots, or places that are undeveloped or agricultural land that's not quite subdivided, and then, develop place types and land use scenarios based on what we saw. And so, we developed that based on the common forms of development and those land use patterns, and what we were seeing at that time as expected growth and development.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. So, Mari, do we have any brownfields?
No, actually, we do not.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, then, this, based on what we saw, the consultant came up with land use scenarios. So, there was business as usual, so kind of what was already prevalent in the old general plan, there was community of neighborhoods, which broke up more into your neighborhood areas, or where we were seeing certain areas that were looking more towards industrial or commercial or possible innovative districts. And then, there was town core. So, that was more to keep certain things centralized to where we're looking at what's happening more downtown, and then kind of keep things more common on the outside. And then, we have an element of, the general plan was to look at water and how it was being used. So, one of the maps provided was for water providers and their areas within the Town of Florence. And that concludes what was shared at that time, and what was presented at that planning and zoning and town council workshop, work session. I think it kind of gave a pretty good overview of those first two sections of introduction in our community, because those areas include your character elements, your land use elements, which have that place type, and then also, the introduction, which has a lot of the surveys and the information and data that was provided to us by the consultant.
So, I think what we're talking about goes through basically page 15 of the document that we received, the actual general plan document. So, commission members, are there any questions relating to pages 1 through 15, which is the introductory part of the general plan?
Mr. Chair, I have one question about the water area not serviced by Florence. Are those people strictly on wells? And would that be more of cactus forest area, or, so that's, I didn't think they were in our township.
They're in the planning area.
They're in the planning area, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? It was good reading. It was fun to read through it all again. Just maybe a quick comment. One of the things that, that you hear several times as you went through the presentation, and rightfully so, goals.
Yes.
And there's the old saying that a, a goal not written is only a wish. There's a lot of written stuff here, but for, in order to, for a goal to really be part of what we're doing, we have to go back and check and get report outs every once in a while. Does the staff envision that on some timeline between 2022 and 2030, that there will be report outs to probably us and to town council about where the goals, how the goals are performing here, and what we need to be doing, and where we're lacking, and where, where we need more effort to make it, to accomplish the goals?
Do you want to speak, or, I can, but, okay, yep. So, in the implement, implementation section of this general plan, it does talk about how we are most, we are supposed to be reporting out every year. And of course, we haven't been keeping up with that, and that's reported to town council. What community development is doing right now is we are looking at all those implementations and how they connect to the goals and policies that we're setting, and seeing where we're at, what projects are we doing to keep with that implementation, and how are we meeting these goals? And so, we plan to report at town council this year, actually, and we are putting together that report. We are communicate, we are working to communicate with the other departments, because they are also included on who implements what, because of, community development does implement all of this general plan. It is all the departments. So, we are working with the other departments in order to see where they're working, and what policies and goals they're meeting. And that, that's where we're at right now.
I, I, I think I could speak for the four of us up here, and for the fifth missing member as well, that we're happy to be part of that implementation, and look forward to hearing reports on it, so that we can help support that in whatever ways that we can. Super. So, next time, so we can start our reading, where, where are we going to the next time we have one of these, how far into the general plan?
Do we go, want to go over the infrastructure, our infrastructure part then, section next time, since that one's kind of?
In the table of contents, our next big section is our community.
Oh, okay. So, we'll go over our community in the next one.
Okay, through, through 59 or 60. Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Marty Sella, AJ, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I have a request. So, the PowerPoint that was presented tonight really was the consultant's attempt to roll together a, a really large document, right? So, we won't have that again at our disposal. So, the next meeting, in detail, where would you like us to focus? Because we want to present the best, the best report we can, or facilitate the best discussion possible. And, and I know that each of you are reading these different sections as we go through it, but for me, and I think for staff, it's, it's important to understand how we can better serve you when we do have our next meeting, so as to possibly facilitate more than a report out. If, if you're wanting it to become a discussion of, of these different chapters, please let us know that, because I, I would, I want to make it the best I Because I would, I want to make it the best, the best we can for you when we're spending time like this together to go through the document.
I cheated and read ahead a little bit, and this is the section where many of us kind of, because here's, the next section includes all the PUDs. And I think for me, and it's not part of the general plan, you have, you have a list of all the PUDs, but you do not have the document that you shared with us previously where they're spatially located within the, within the context of the general plan. So I think that would be helpful just to, for us to have that. That's, that's been kind of a hot button is PUDs. And that's just one thing that I thought of as I read through this.
So what I'm hearing is that in addition to sort of the, the theme of reviewing the general plan is what we're, we're talking about. But if we can supplement it with other information to build upon the general, the general nature of the general plan into more detailed, sort of stream in some more of the detail in some of these discussions seems to be what, what you may be requesting there?
And that's just because I, I know that PUDs have just been an issue of concern. So that's the one thing is, as I have read to that, that point in the general plan that I thought might add a little more context. And I appreciate the invitation and I hope we'll all take that as we read this next section. If you see anything that you believe needs a little more emphasis, to please feed that to Marty Sellen, Andrew or AJ so that we can make sure that happens. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So the general plan has, has gone from zoning areas into more regional areas. The general plans I'm used to working with are more zonal and you have a list of businesses that can go in that zone. How does, how does that change from that map to this map? How does that, I see this as being, I see our general plan as being very loose. That a developer could come in and want to put a gas station next to the vice mayor's house and we can't stop it. Seriously, I mean, there's an open piece of property all by the, all by the police department. And if somebody wanted to come in and put in a, a gas station and it's, land is big enough, we can't say no. So I'm trying to understand how we can have something a little bit broader, yet tighten it up so that we don't have a gas station next door. That to me, I always found puzzling, quite frankly.
So what I've asked, good question. Thank you for that. And again, this is important, right? We're, we're trying to be, we're trying to have the best conversation we can. So what I asked Mari to do is pull up that presentation. So if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to step up to the podium. Mari, could you go to page 25, please?
I'm impressed. You even know what page.
And, and just to keep us honest here, Cliff, if we get too far off the agenda because we agendized that we go through the introductory section, I don't want to get us too far off course here, but don't want to get us into a gray area here. So raise your hand if you think we're getting, heading out.
So on this page, and this goes to what Mari mentioned a little bit, when she had that slide that compared the previous general plan with this one. And as Mari mentioned, when you looked at that other one, it looked a lot more like a zoning map than it did a more of a general map. Again, I wasn't here for when that was happening, but I've been able to spend a lot of time with Mari and, and folks that worked on this document. And, and I can understand the challenges that were faced by the community, by the planners working on this project. Because so much of this area here is covered by planned unit developments, to your point. And so when you look at a place type called suburban neighborhood, that's why you see that as such a large district on the general or on the, on this, on this place type land use map. Because what was going to happen is it was very much going to look like a zoning map because it had all the PUDs and we houses here and commercial here. So I think what was, what was happening was it was a great challenge to them. And, and so I think that they were trying to, they were trying to revert back to what a general plan is, be very general in nature as opposed to getting very specific with zoning. So to Vice Chair DeRosa's comment, what the important, to your point, is to take the general nature of this document and understand that this document guides the development of the zoning map as a next step. It, it, it's, it's, it's this document's general principles that guide us to reviewing chapter 150, to making suggested changes to that document again, because those become the documents that help us realize the general plan, correct? So it's, it's taking this broad idea, trying to convey a lot of information into 200 pages. And in the case of here in the town of Florence, it was a challenge because of all those PUDs. So as we go forward to the vice chair's point, that is why we, we already have those PUDs. We know what can happen. There won't be a gas station next to the vice mayor's house unless she's bought a parcel next to a piece of property that may be the gas station. And, and then we have our zoning map, right? So our zoning map identifies all the planned unit developments. And then when we get into areas that may not be controlled and governed by a PUD, it's the zoning district. And that's where then we need to look into it. So in this area here, if I could zoom into it and we get to like the intersection of Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway, most of that's controlled by the Anthem and Merrill Ranch planned unit development. However, three of the four corners are hard zoned B2. So we then have to look at chapter 150 and look at what the permitted uses are in that zoning district, B2, and then what the development standards may be in the B2 zoning district. So to, to get to the point of that level of specificity, we need to now take the general plan, go to the implementation chapter and then begin to look methodically through the zoning ordinance, the development standards, the zoning map, and make those changes while all keeping in mind some of the laws in the state of Arizona about diminutive definition of value and those kind of things. So there's a lot that goes into that. So I, I hope that helps, but that also helps me stream the, our general review of this plan with some of those details you want throughout the conversation. So I do appreciate the conversation. As we get into reviewing the implementation chapter, there have been a number of modifications to chapter 150 that has been brought by staff to, to you, to, to the town council over the past several years, and we continue to do that. I mean, at some point, we had a massive public outreach process here. We probably talk about public outreach in this document. I'm sure we do. And then just tonight, we're always tweaking and amending chapter 150 to make sure that we're ultimately realizing the goals, the implementation measures that are outlined in this, this plant, this larger scale planning document. So as we go through this, as Mari mentioned, we're in the process of putting together a report to the town manager, to town council. And as Mari pointed out earlier, there's a number of things that are outside the purview of the community development department itself. As you go through that document, you're going to notice that it's a lot of different departments that come together to, to realize a lot of complex things. Because again, we can't be siloed in the community. It's important that community development partner with community services, partner with public works. And, and we're seeing that here in the town. So I'll wrap up, but I, because I could probably keep going. But I appreciate understanding the level of maybe detail or how you can help us help you as we make our way through this review.
So AJ, what I'm looking for is tightening up some of the permitted uses in some of these areas or what some of the permitted uses are. And is that something we want to take a look at? Maybe, maybe a gas station should not be in that location. Maybe it should be in another location. Just, so it's the permitted uses. Right now, I read this document as if an applicant comes in and has a project that fits, you know, checks all the boxes, we can't deny it. The PUDs being a perfect example that we've already seen. But if a commercial developer comes in and presents a project, and again, it checks all our boxes, it may not be the highest and best use for that land, but we can't deny it. So I don't want us to be in that position where we have to, we have to have, we have to give a developer permission to do something because we didn't take control and say, well, maybe that's not, you know, we want to look at the highest and best use for, for the land here in the, in the town.
And so, good point. Well, and it's well taken. So really that goes for me, I would then dive immediately into the implementation chapter, which is chapter whatever, chap 14 or something. And, and look at that. And it does talk about that. It does talk about looking at land uses. It does talk about look, standards and things like that. So if, so thank you for that. So really, maybe the focus needs to be on chapter 150, the existing zoning districts, right? The things that we can, we have a role to play in. And compare that up against this, this general plan. And again, I think the general plan is going to give us that discretion already. As you've said, it's general, it gives us big ideas. And then it's our responsibility to go into the enforcement of it, enforcement, and wrong word. But the only way to make this happen is through zoning, right? Is to establish some rules.
We, we don't want to put ourselves in a position of, of having a developer sue us because we don't think it's the highest and best use. But our, our documents say we have no choice.
Yeah. And, and, and as we, if we were just given example of a hard zoning district, B2 is an example. Yeah, we, as we go through that list, and we've heard that when we had the change zoning request, the industrial one east of, east of Arizona 79, where we did spend some time talking about, well, what would the list of permitted uses be? And I know that petitioner during their, their neighborhood meeting really went through our zoning ordinance and went through A to M or whatever it was. And, and I also, is if we were to, and again, we may be getting off topic here, but that is, it's understood. And maybe what we should do is agendize that and, and, and maybe bridge the gap between this general plan and our zoning map and our zoning ordinance and permitted uses and, and begin to stream those two things together. Because again, we're broadly speaking about what is the direction the community is going to want to go from a land development standpoint. This is the general broad stroke and it's chapter 150. It's our land, it's our zoning map. It's chapter 150 that begins to rein that in. And now we're coloring in, we're coloring in the details.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? I think I'm one of the old timers that was here for a lot of these discussions. And I really appreciate the vice chair's comments here. At the time, it was said as a developer's giveaway because of the flexibility. And the comeback was with a good P and Z commission and a strong planning department, this would be an optimal plan. And the argument has been, I think until now, we did not have that in place. I really like what I'm hearing, the direction this going with this very competent commission and relooking at some of the loose zoning. Because I absolutely agree with you. There's nothing we can do with it right now if a commercial developer came in and wanted to do something. I don't want a gas station next to my house. So I appreciate it, but that, that was the background and it was the trade off we were willing to make at the time because of the hardcoded zoning map, which was very difficult to work with, right?
And I, Vice Mayor, I do understand that. Please keep in mind that while you have a strong commission today, you don't know what tomorrow will bring.
True.
And, and so it's important, and the same thing with staff. You have a, you have a very concrete staff today. You have a very solid staff who not only understand, but have the opportunity to, within themselves, look at things. That's today. We don't know what tomorrow will bring and I.
I see us getting the both, the best of both worlds, right?
Today we are, but tomorrow.
Tightening up on the looseness of it.
Yes, yes.
Right?
Thank you.
Let me put my two cents in, please.
Please.
I mean, I was involved also five years ago with all these planning meetings. My wife and I went to most every one of them. And if you went back to page 25 here, which is that kind of zoning map that we want to call a zoning map, part of what this whole process was, was trying to get input from the citizens on what they wanted. So one of the things that our consultant did was spend a lot of time talking about these goals, the seven goals. And then trying to put all these different things and say, that checks this box, that checks that box. There's a lot of data there that they gathered from the citizens on what they wanted. The problem was, how do you communicate all that data into, you know, something that guides you? And if you notice on this map, and I look at this map a lot because I'm always looking, wait a minute, is that in the town or is that in the county? You know, and, and we plan, like you look at that whole north part, if San Tan Valley becomes a town, essentially everything down to Arizona farms that isn't in our town is going to become part of their town. And I've got some interest up there along Arizona farms that I have into, but it's on the wrong side. So it's, it's very hard. And, and the biggest thing I remember of that whole thing was they wanted to make sure that we, we for this, to the state, that we had gravel pits for the future building. I mean, that was, you know, aggregate. They like to use the word aggregate, but I call it, you know, gravel pit. So we could make concrete and things of that sort, which are big on here on this map. And there's so little industrial on this map that it was very, you know, it was kind of a disappointment because that's not what people were looking for. They weren't talking about, I need, I need businesses to come in that are manufacturing and things of that sort. That's where Coolidge took that, that away from Florence. And that's the problem we've kind of faced. We're going to be a bedroom community and we're going to be that kind of way with more service jobs than anything else. And that's kind of where we're at. So it's a, it's a different type of plan than a lot of people would think. As far as let's zone this, let's control what's growing and what's happening. It was more kind of, let's get the citizens' input. And it'll be interesting to see what the staff comes back with as far as what they present to us and probably to the town council too, on how we've met the goals that the citizens asked for. So that's kind of where I'm at.
And just, Mr. Pro.
No, you covered, you, you've covered some of the points that I was, wanted to make as well. So I think we're right on, yeah.
And AJ, just as I'm, as I'm thinking about this right, right now in the current structure, when a project comes in, we have professional staff that are going to do eyes on. And then we now have a TAC that's going to do eyes on. So as we go through this, I would appreciate any guidance or thoughts that you have that how we can be of benefit with five different sets of eyes up here to help that process. You know, as, as, as we're going through these various sections, what can we do and what's, what's in our bookends to be able to do? What's, what's in our ballpark? That, that would be some good guidance for us as well as we go through this.
So I think I can give a quick answer tonight and we will definitely get into a more detailed answer as we go forward. What you can do is be participating in this conversation and, and being, and sharing with us what you're thinking and, and you asked, then you asked a very specific question, what can we do? You do have a responsibility to this general plan. You do have a responsibility to suggest modifications to chapter 150 to make sure that this plan gets implemented in the best possible way it can for the residents of the town of Florence. And so listening and, and understanding a little bit more of the nuance of what you're looking for, and I appreciate that, is for me, I think the immediate response will be, we need to take a good, hard dive at looking at chapter 150. This document, the general plan, enables us to do so. And now we need to get into, we need to now, we need to get into the details. Because as we, as we know, right, the, the state of Arizona is, is moving ahead with a lot more administrative review of, of, of many of the development plans that may come in. And we need the rulebook. We need to know administratively what this community is asking us to do. You are advisors to the town council. They're, they've empowered you and in charged you with helping them get here. And, and the best way I know how to do that is through the chapter 150. That's going to give us the rulebook. And so what you're helping us do is write that, that rulebook so that you know we're doing our part as the staff, as the council, to make sure that we're getting what everybody asked for a couple of years back. So I, I do think that you have a very strong role to play in, in terms of working through, just like we did the neighborhood notification. Now we need to look at different chapters of the municipal code or chapter 150 and different sections of that to. different sections of that to really dive into the details. What is the, as an example, what is the landscape buffer between a hard zoned property and a PUD? Just one minor example, but that could be huge to the people living in the PUD and the development of the hard zoned locations. So, it's chapter 150, that's where the rubber hits the road.
And that, that benefits us, and that also benefits the development community, because they know coming in what the rulebook is, and there's no ambiguity, and that gets to the vice mayor's concern about doing something and then losing some of the knowledge here. If it's, if it's in the book, then it carries on, so good point, thank you. Anything else this evening? Thank you very much, good start to this process of going through the, this is, I think this is the meat that we wanted to sink our teeth into, thank you very much. Okay, with that, as long as you're at the stand, it's director's report, AJ.
Yes, good evening, chair, vice chair, commissioners, good to be here tonight. A few things I wanted to mention, it is likely, number one, that we will not be having a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May 15th. It looks like we will have, we will not have any business. We do have this, obviously, discussion to continue. So between lack of business and that is also the Historic Preservation Conference in, in Phoenix, May 14th through the 17th. I believe vice mayor will be attending, Mari, Andrew, so we're gonna have a lot of folks up at that conference. And so between lack of business and then that conference, I don't think we'll have that meeting on the 15th. We will confirm that, just to double check to make sure that there would be no pending business, and we'd hate to, hate to get in the way of any sort of progress in the development So we'll, we'll, we'll get that out soon thereafter. We will have a meeting on June 3rd, and we do expect a number of items to be on that agenda. So, please plan accordingly. I did mention the Historic Preservation Conference coming up, it's in Phoenix this year, and there will be, I'm sure, a number of good sessions during the conference. This is also Historic Preservation Month here in Arizona, and we were at the Rail 3 Ranch on Main Street, presenting them, their plaque for their building, as well as, as presenting a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month. Mayor Eaton, our public information officer, was there, and a number of staff here, and Commissioner West was also in attendance. So that was a nice little moment to, to share that with, with the owners of Rail 3. Last night, we did have our historic district advisory meeting where we had a couple folks from the state's Historic Preservation Office, presenting and talking about tax credits and opportunities for funding for historic buildings in downtown. Eric Vandy and Susan Lawson did a tremendous job last night, and I really want to compliment Mari for putting that together and bringing those folks to the town of Florence, that are friend of, friends of the town of Florence, and, and I know they always, they always enjoy coming to, to spend some time here. We are pretty busy, there are a number of final plats in review right now. Last month, I think I reported just shy of 20, right now we're at 28.
Wow.
Twenty-six final plats, two preliminary. We have a number of cases that, many of them will be coming to you, conditional use permits, rezonings, PUD amendments, we have a lot of work ahead of us in the months to come. We also are moving forward with the general plan amendment calendar. Mari, Andrew are, are beginning to get that word out to the development community. So in August and September, we'll be quite busy with public hearings and considering amendments to the general plan. Again, following the procedures laid out in that general plan document that we talked about a little earlier tonight. That would, that will conclude my report unless you would like to ask any questions.
Mission members?
No, sir, but June 3rd is a Tuesday, not a Thursday.
Let's go with June 5th.
So it'll be a June 5th.
Let's go with June 5th, my apologies, thank you.
Not a problem. And just for the record, I will not be here.
Okay, okay.
Have a graduation.
Awesome. Well, enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Thanks AJ.
You're welcome.
Okay, call to the commission.
Okay, I do have one thing that I'd like to mention. We just received, I noticed first of all in Spanish about a week ago in the republic, the public meetings for what I refer to as the ghost highway, which is now the 505, it was the north-south corridor. There will be a in-person public meeting in Apache Junction on Thursday, May 15th, so that might be a good time to go up to Apache Junction since we're not having a meeting here. But then Tuesday, May 20th, at Post and Butte High School, there will be a public meeting that I plan on attending, mainly to say I don't want you to dump all that traffic on Arizona Farms. And then there's a virtual public meeting on Thursday, May 22nd, and that will be online. So if you haven't got the notice, I'll be glad to give you my copy here, and I do have a printout that I, I can give you as well, so if anybody's interested in that. So, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of developments, not only in our, you know, municipal area, but the county is approving things right and left. And, so there's gonna be a lot, I'd say we're probably about half of what the development's gonna be in and around Florence in the next few years. Because the county is approving subdivisions, there's one going in on Arizona Farms, and Mangla Vista is, keeps going and going. They have a great facility up there, I don't know what it is, but it looks like a swimming pool and things of that sort. So, those kind of things are going on around our area, and it'll be interesting to see the developments we have on that. So, that's what I have.
Mission member, vice chair?
Nothing new, nothing here.
I had something, but it just totally left my head, so.
I, I have one-
Senior moment.
I, I have one request, and maybe it's guidance, and I'm, I'm glad our vice mayor is here because I know she's greatly involved in historic district. Historic district is something that I, I kind of have encapsulated in my brain where it's at, and we see historic district, but I need to be better educated about the historic district, the vision, everything else about it, so that I can speak to it when somebody asks me, would it be valuable to have the historic district come and make a recommendation, or not, make a presentation to this body? Or should I just go to the meetings to be better educated? It'd be nice to have a nice encapsulation of goals, processes, vision, everything else that I, I don't think I really have.
I, I think that it probably wouldn't be helpful to go to individual meetings because they're just like planning and zoning, they're hearing individual design reviews, so it really wouldn't give you a broad. What I would suggest is because the council right now is just getting underway with our strategy, our strategic planning, I would like you, if you could put it off for a month, let us get that kick-started, and once I get a sense of where the council is, I'm happy to come and give you an overview of Kathy Adams' view, when you can work this into a session, and then as we go through, I think it's a perfect time because as you get into chapter 150, right, you know, the historic district is a zoning overlay. So it's a great time to talk about how that fits, how that doesn't fit, things like solar panels, things like, you know, the newer technologies, how they fit in the district, and there's been some conversation about enlarging the district possibly, so I'll work with you on it.
You know, this, the, you, you can't help but start reading the general plan without seeing historic mentioned in some form or fashion, all through the opening section of it. And I guess my mind doesn't, there, there, it's like, it's like the old target, there's a target area, but I think this entire region is historic in the context of Arizona history. So it would be, it would be interesting to see what the target area, the downtown is, and then how that expands to our entire area and how that all folds in. So, yeah, any, any guidance, I think we would all appreciate the, the vision on that.
It's integral to not just our identity as Florence, but we're going through the planning process for Penal County's 150th, did I get that right? This fall they're celebrating, but it's this whole year. And then of course, we're going into the 250th anniversary of the country next year, right? So history plays a very large role in this, and I think it's going to be a central focus of the council as a tourist destination, right? Because as you say, we did not plan for industry, we don't have a railroad, we don't have an airport, we don't have a major interstate. So what we have is a fabulous entertainment tourist district.
Yeah, so yeah, I, we'll, we'll hold you to that here in another month or two to come and, and give us the vision and kind of encapsulate it for us, I think that'd be great education. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for my compadres in crime up here. Okay, thank you very much.
So Mr. Chairman, I finally, finally came back. AJ, maybe you can update the committee at some point in time on what the impacts of the potential incorporation of Santan? And how that, anything that we might want to keep in mind is, we do things here in planning and zoning?
Yes, let us do some research on that, we'll get it on a future agenda. I believe as Commissioner Lehman mentioned earlier, that as we were reviewing the general plan, I'll get back to the agenda here, counselor, that a large section of that northern planning area, north of Arizona Farms, you know, is part of that proposed incorporation. So, absolutely, let us put some information together and we'll have it on a future agenda.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Super, great meeting, thanks for all this, the staff, I know staff spent a lot of time making this happen this evening, so thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion for, to adjourn.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Proof for adjournment, and with a second by Commissioner Lehman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four ayes, thanks everybody.